Yeah, I don't know if I could.
Really? Where would you move to?
Don't know.
I don't like the way.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening. I'm going to call our planning board meeting of May 18th to order. And I will begin by reading the roll. John, myself present, Rebecca.
I'm here.
Phil.
Present.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Mark is excused this evening. And Susan.
Present.
Alternate members, Zach is absent. Michael Bouchard, he said he might come late, I believe.
On Zoom, I think.
And Peter.
Present.
Okay. As we have one full-time member absent this evening, Peter, I will see you as a voting member this evening.
Sure.
So next up, we have our review of minutes from May 4th. Pretty detailed summary. I did notice one thing, very minor.
Sure.
First page, Kent called the roll for the zoning board of adjustment with a lowercase a.
Ah, capital A. Good catch.
Otherwise, it's pretty good.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with the capital A. Second.
Any further discussion?
There's no A in minutes.
Hell.
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
All right, the minutes are approved of, when was that, May 4th. Have there been, Joe Joseph, communications received?
There is one new communication. As per the statute, the planning board will CC on a survey that's recorded at the registry of deeds, boundary confirmation plan at lot 201026 Chaseon Road. It's a boundary confirmation of a disputed boundary line, which is made CC to the planning board, but it's not, you know, doesn't require planning board action since it doesn't change any boundary lines or create any new roadways. If anybody would like, I can pull it up. Otherwise, you know, anyone's welcome to stop by and take a look. We have a copy at the town hall, and it's also recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay, thank you. All good.
From a tracking standpoint, does that ever, does the deed or, when that gets recorded, trying to think about the logistics of finding that plan, usually when the deed is recorded, it references an older plan. Do you know, so will there be a note on the property card of an updated plan for that, logistically?
I do share it with the assessing department, so I imagine they make that note. I'm not sure on the deed side, at what point they update.
It seems like it would make sense to reference updated plan on the property card, since it wouldn't be noted on the deed, but, sorry for the sidetrack there.
Okay, all good. Okay, so up next, we have applications and public hearings, beginning with a conditional use permit for an ADU at 72 Morse Road. There's an application for conditional use permit to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit at 72 Morse Road, PID 223066. And I believe this is from Alan Merrifield. And... So we have a good amount of application materials here. Is the applicant here to speak? Would you like to come up and introduce the application?
Here.
Yeah, to podium, please.
So the plan is to build a apartment for my wife's parents, who have lived on Tenney Mountain Highway for 50 years and have finally sold their house. And they are elderly and need to be on ground level. So this is just a simple 24 by 24 addition. Had a septic inspection. I have that report that I just got, if anybody would like to see it. It's in good shape. It's a 1250 tank, and they said that another bedroom can be added without a problem. We are in talk with Kevin French for just in case. The septic needs to be updated, so he has been out yesterday and did some surveying, and will have some plans in place, just in case something does need to be updated, because the septic is, you know, 30, 40 years old. So, but they said it's in fair, fair to good condition.
Okay. So I think we're just going to look through this first and determine if the application is complete, and then we will perhaps ask some further questions and before opening up a public hearing.
Sure.
Do you have any thoughts about the completeness of this and if we're ready to move forward?
I'd make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we'll accept the application as complete. And then we can, so we're just going to look through everything and make sure all the pieces are in place that need to be for our own, the various criteria of the ADU permit and all that. So one of the conditions, of course, is that we have combinations for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. I was noticing on the interior layout, that looks like all of that is there, yeah. And... Eventually, we should do findings of fact as well, when we get to the end of this process.
So I guess I'm confused by, we, so for, this is the only conditional use permit we have in our zoning ordinance, is that right?
Correct.
And not that we always used to do things exactly the way we're supposed to, but we do need to go through the accepting the application, the public hearing and everything for a conditional use permit?
You know, I think there's a certain amount of gray area in that. It's not really spelled out very clearly in the bylaws and anywhere else, for that matter, in our regulations. And I've been, I've seen it go both ways. And it seems worth going through just, just to check.
There is no...
It's a bit vague, though, in our own regulations.
Yeah, there is no specific alternate procedure that was adopted in zoning when conditional use permit was adopted. So when that amendment went into place, there was never an alternative procedure that was adopted alongside it. So I think it makes sense to use the standard statutory procedure for other applications.
It doesn't say we have to, but it kind of makes sense.
Okay. So the, my other question...
It might be good, oh, I'm sorry. It might be good in the future to actually clarify that in our own regulations or bylaws, how we deal with that.
Yeah, often it is a section in the zoning ordinance that clarifies the process, which is not in ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing is, like, what distinguishes between a two-family dwelling and an attached ADU? Because if this was just a two-family dwelling, it's permitted in this zone and wouldn't require a visit to us. But that's maybe not something we discuss while we've got an application in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, the difference, the main difference is being, you know, of course, the limitations on size, that no increased area, lot area, is required for an ADU, which is for a two-family. So that's a difference between that. And then also, of course, all the other criteria.
Yeah.
So do any of us have any questions for the applicant? I do not.
I did note, it seems that on the checklist, there's a question that says, will the construction increase the number of dwelling units on the lot? And it was selected no. But it would seem that we're going from, do we consider the accessory dwelling unit a new dwelling unit?
It is a new dwelling unit, I guess technically. I guess that would be yes.
Is that, that's in the building permit or in the ADU criteria?
Page two of the building permit application.
Okay. Which technically, I mean...
It's not us on this.
It's not, yeah.
We have the conditional use permit, but I would think for the perspective of clarity, the applicant may want to amend that when they file with the town for the building permit. I would think that it would add a second dwelling unit, but I don't think that would negatively impact you.
It's a temporary.
Right, but, but, I mean, the temporary can change. I mean, you'll probably need to file another permit at some point if you convert from residence to garage, which at one point you can reduce, reuse, or reduce the number of dwelling units from two to one.
I don't think that's material for this.
I agree.
That's before us.
It's, because it's attached, I just caught my attention. But I don't see it as a problem.
Do we have any discussion among the board before we open a public hearing?
Did we accept it as complete?
Yeah. Did you vote?
Do you know when the original house was built?
1983.
There should be an approved state septic system.
And I just want to say, in general, when we're speaking, try to speak into a microphone. And not only so we can hear you, but also the recording we're doing, or PBT.
I do have a copy of the original, if you would like to see it.
Whoa.
I just got that today.
Okay.
From Kevin French.
Sure, that's fine.
Should we open a public hearing? Anybody have anything to say before then? Okay. If more discussion, we can always convene again afterwards. So it's 6:45, and I will open a public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak to this application for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. Anybody on Zoom?
There is someone on Zoom.
But no hands raised or anything, right? No.
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please unmute and help yourself or raise your hand.
Thank you, Phil. All right, so it is still 6:45, and I will close the public hearing. So we should probably start looking at some...
Findings of fact.
Findings of fact, thank you. Slipping my mind.
I don't know if that's even required for approval of a permit.
I think it's pretty straightforward, though, and we might as well just have the kind of tees crossed.
All right.
I will say that the ADU does not exceed 1,000 square feet of habitable area.
Could we just say it meets all the criteria for the conditional use permit?
Good idea.
As long as you have a moment to actually all read through them and make sure we agree with it. I read through them ahead of time.
Certainly hope everyone read through it before they got here.
I did, I did. Just want to check. It seemed okay to me.
Yeah, we also did accept the application as complete without talking about any of that.
It's understood that the applicant will adhere to state requirements for the capacity of the septic system for the added bedroom.
Yes.
His original design may accommodate that, or if it doesn't, he would, he's going to comply.
Yes, and that sounds like that's what you communicated.
Yes.
And that's one of the ADU criteria, the CUP criteria.
I would offer the finding of fact that there are no members of the public spoke for or against the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Although I would say that, I would offer the finding of fact that our state is in a shortage of housing, and this would seem to contribute to relieve that statewide strain.
I feel like that's less of a finding of fact than it is an observation. And I think we're probably good with the, you know, just, well, the ones that I suggested.
Need to catch all.
Yeah, the meeting the, require the criteria for the CUP, I think. It require, you know, I just think that what the requirements are pretty straightforward, meaning dimensional requirement, septic systems, square footage size, owner occupancy, all these things, so.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it is approved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Is this your recycling pile or mine?
Mine's not here.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have another conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit on nine, at 9 Martin Estates Road. And so just reading here, this is an application for conditional use permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit attached to a proposed garage at 9 Martin Estates Road, PID 24102001. And is the applicant here? Would you like to come up perhaps and say a few words about your application?
Yes, hi, my name is Clifford Mask. I live at 9 Martin Estates Drive. We're proposing to build an accessory dwelling unit with the garage in the back of the lot. The idea is that I've always wanted a garage, need a garage. The ADU, which is acceptable by state law, we look to use for friends and family. More so recently, my father passed away, so it'd make a good transition from a stepmother to get out of her house and sell and figure out what she's going to do next in life. So that's kind of why, one of the reasons why I went with the direction with the ADU and garage. At the same time, we have the septic approved with the state for a three-bedroom and two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit at this time, which was accomplished back in last fall. And then just went down the ADU list and kept it congruent with the requirements, square footage in like with the existing structure. And we're way under 75% of the total area.
And is this, this letter is from you? The, oh, I'm sorry, you can't find, you can't see it from there, but it says, "Thank you Clifford," at the end. This is about the curb cut?
Sorry.
This is about the curb cut?
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't clear on where you were asking about additional curb cut. My designer, he's old school, like, he does it by hand, he does an e-file. So for, I can't explain, but for whatever reason, he went over the original design that he did. So there is no additional curb cut. The curb cut is, I'm not sure if it's being interpreted by the original. That driveway is always gone where it is, and it goes past the house into the backyard. So I looked closer at it, it shows some contour lines. So I'm not sure if that was being misinterpreted as an additional curb cut, but that's always been there. So yeah, I made a note of it. I was trying to clarify that there's no additional curb cut.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, I'm looking on the application here, it is less than 1,000 square feet.
Oh, yeah, correct, it's 864 square feet.
Is it just the second story of the garage structure? Is it just the second story?
For living space, according to the ADU requirements.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine. I was going to say that the structure itself looks fairly large, but there's no limit to the amount of garage space you want, you can have.
Yeah, correct. It's 24 by 36, and with the ADU, it requires under 1,000, which is 864. Covered walkways, two parking spaces, so we kind of cover all that in the one building.
Looks like a good design.
Thank you. And then garage, I, I mean, in addition, I sunk the back garage lower in the ground to take advantage of the slope, so it doesn't stand out, you know, from the road.
Yeah.
Kind of blends in.
I would move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the application is accepted as complete. Any further discussion from the board? Questions?
I was looking at the approval for the septic system design, and it says it's a three-bedroom system.
Yeah, if you look at line D, it's three bedrooms plus two bedrooms, the ADU.
Okay.
D2.
It's spine print.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you look at section, what, four? Oh, three.
Yeah.
Four, five, six, five.
Rum in five, D2.
Yeah, D.
Two.
Two.
750 gallons.
Yeah, three plus two.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of tricky, I noticed that, too.
Looks good.
No question.
Are we good for public hearing? So it is 6:54, and I will open the public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak to this application for conditional use permit for an ADU, please come up to the podium and state your name, and what do you have to say?
Hi, that was loud. My name is Lindsay, and I live at 20 Martin Estates Drive. I actually work in the town of Sunapee, so I really appreciate everything that you guys do. I'm in finance, so I don't know really anything about planning and zoning side other than land disturbance bonds and how to calculate interest. I am here just to ask you guys to defer your decision on Cliff's garage. We do live in an HOA. This is against the covenants, and we have not had a meeting about it. There's been no vote. My property is like a smidge away from being in a butter. I did not receive a notice. And I just, I know that there's like this huge housing crisis in Plymouth right now. I live in a habitat house, so I know the housing crisis and the affordability. But I just would ask that the HOA get a courtesy vote on this prior to you guys making a decision.
In, so obviously, that's a very important issue for the HOA and all the residents there. For the planning board, it's not something we can really consider in our vote. It could become a civil issue or something if it goes forward.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else wants to add any clarity to that.
I would agree that we can really only deal with the regulations that we have.
Yeah, so if it fits our regulations, then we can approve it. It doesn't mean, it doesn't violate the HOA guidelines, but that would be a separate issue to take up.
Okay.
I do appreciate what that obviously might mean, but...
I think the other thing you mentioned, if I can address your other concern, was notification of abutters, and to my knowledge, we're not requiring notification of abutters for conditional use permits, is that correct?
We do require.
We do?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, all right. So presumably, all the abutters were noticed for these?
The list, per the list.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's my mistake, then, thank you.
Are there any more comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Ball. I live at 579 Texas Hill Road. I'm here to speak in support of Mr. Mask's project. I've spoken with Mr. Mask about it. Appreciate the need to furnish housing, especially for elderly family members. As we've said with the prior case in here and through other things in town, there is a significant housing crisis, and I think that this would assist in a very small level of taking care of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please just unmute yourself and do so. All right. So it is 6:57, and I will close the public hearing. So back to the board.
Would you like findings of fact?
Yeah.
Rebecca, do you want to start with yours?
Yes, I would say that this accessory dwelling unit meets all the criteria established in the conditional use permit. Thank you.
And we're all okay with that?
Yep.
He has an approved septic design to accommodate five bedrooms.
Thank you, yeah. Do we want to address the curb cut issue?
There's only one curb cut.
Seems that the curb cut issue has been resolved.
Okay.
Any questions, you know, the applicant saw the, I guess the finding of fact offers that the applicant confirmed that there is no additional curb cut proposed and that he's planning to use existing driveway. Is that correct? Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve in a second. Are there any further comments from the board? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so the application is approved. Congratulations. So next up... So next up, we have a boundary line adjustment at 160-188 Old Hebron Road. It's an application for a boundary line adjustment to transfer 23.17 acres from parcel 228009 to parcel 228009.
It's parcels eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
Property is located at 160 and 188 Hebron Road.
Old Hebron Road.
Old Hebron Road. I'm sorry, I was still looking at the numbers. They're, they're...
Right, it is incorrect.
There's a typo on the agenda.
There is, yes.
Okay. That's why I was confused for a second.
I just wanted to clarify.
Sorry about my moment of ruse.
Old Hebron Road, not New Hebron Road.
No, no. It was listed correctly in the application.
Yes. Is he, oh, hello, welcome.
Ready to go.
Would you like to say a few words about the application?
Sure. I'm Tom Hahn with Forco in Remy, representing the Favre family, who are the principals in both of the ownerships. So they're principals of the Lawson Investment Fund, as well as the Birth of Favre Revocable Trust. So it's kind of a family transfer here, as they're doing some estate planning and overall property planning. Lot 228-8 is 43.82 acres. Lot 228-9 is 35.86 acres. Lot 228-9 is encumbered by a conservation easement held by the Remy Ecological Systems. And 7.18 acres of that parcel was reserved in the conservation easement for a single-family residential site. So the proposal is to move 23.17 acres from 228-9, which has the... So the proposal is to move 23.17 acres from 228-9, which has the conservation easement on it, and add those acres to lot 228-8. That'll result in 228-8 having 66.99 acres and 228-9 resulting in 12.69 acres, of which 7.1 acres is reserved for that single-family residential site. So the conservation easement acres that are affected remains the same. They'll just get split between two different tax map parcels. The family is currently in negotiations with Romney Ecological Systems to put some of the acreage of 228-8, add that to the conservation easement. So that's nothing that you need to deal with, but it's something that is in the works so that the easement land would be contiguous with each other in the end. And that's all you have.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Or for one another?
Well, there are two waivers that are requested, both of which I think are pretty common on a larger lot size that we see. But I think that's worth just making sure we're all okay with that at the time we think about accepting the application as complete.
It seems unacceptable to me.
Make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we accept the application as complete. Other discussion from the board?
My only discussion is that the, you know, the issues of the conservation easement seem to, I'm just trying to make sense of those, but at the same time, I don't think they affect our decision about the transfer property, so.
Yes, it does.
You know, it seems that the intent of the conservation easement will be maintained, not that we're required to verify that. But I see no issues with this, honestly. Be straightforward.
Are we ready for a public hearing?
I think we should.
So it is 7:06 and I will open the public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak to this application, this boundary line adjustment, please come up to the podium and state your name and your business.
Good evening. I did bring copies of my statement.
Board members? Thank you.
Sorry that I didn't get it to you sooner. My name is Jessica Mayhew. I am addressing the board here tonight on behalf of my brothers, Brian and Christopher Mayhew of 128 Old Hebron Road, myself and my mother, Barbara Lopez Mayhew of 280 Old Hebron Road. We are speaking here this evening to raise concerns over the proposed boundary line adjustment that's been requested for 160 and 188 Old Hebron Road. At face value, this request for a boundary adjustment appears benign, but it is in fact one of the first steps in an effort to fundamentally change the composition of Old Hebron Road. Soon, 188 Old Hebron Road and the hayfield that sits directly across the street, parcel number 288-007, will be placed on the market for sale. It will be placed on the market as a 100-acre parcel with multiple building lots, and it will have a price tag that is well outside the reach of the Plymouth residents. The current residents of Old Hebron are looking at a future where the construction of three or more houses is not only a possibility, it's a near certainty. And granting this boundary adjustment and future requests from the Favre Estate to subdivide will set in motion a cascade of events that are both troubling and short-sighted. If it's granted, it's important that the planning board understands that this goes expressly against the wishes of the year-round residents of Old Hebron Road and works to undermine and further fragment our agricultural lands, critical edge habitats, and an important wildlife corridor. So the Mayhew family has lived and worked in Plymouth for four generations. My mother, my brothers, and I have lived on Old Hebron Road for nearly 40 years. During that time, we have worked hard to be considerate and engaged neighbors, as well as active thoughtful stewards of our own properties and those that surround us. Collectively, the year-round residents of Old Hebron Road have spent generations building and maintaining a rural agricultural space that many in the Plymouth community have vocalized as being important. In fact, Plymouth's 2018 master plan indicates that 68% of Plymouth residents agree that the town should encourage agriculture in our rural areas, and 44% of residents oppose development along our scenic ridge lines and hilltops. Anybody who has driven, biked, or walked along our road knows the intrinsic value as it currently is. One of the planning board's purposes outlined in the subdivision regulations is, quote, "to discourage sprawl and the scattered and premature subdivision of land," end quote. We are currently being squeezed to our east and west as development is taking a foothold on Reservoir, Bell, and Morse Roads, as well as Texas Hill Road and Thurlow Street. Traffic has increased, litter has increased, irresponsible and destructive recreation has increased, a forest fire was set. My brothers and I were recently shot at on our own property from the adjacent Favre tract. We are experiencing déjà vu. Subdivision chaos previously arose in our neighborhood in 2014, 2015 with the incursion of the Mello family, who, if you did not have the pleasure of meeting, were not only not from this area, they were not from New Hampshire. These were people whose goals were born solely from greed. They did not care to know anything about their neighbors, and they cared little for rural life and our livelihoods. They only sought chains, or change, they only saw dollar signs. And we've been left grappling with the damage that the Mello's caused. Seasonal road erosion is far worse. Our upper field is now damaged annually by floods resulting from a lack of appropriate water mitigation and improper driveway construction at 153 and 157 Old Hebron Road. The Favres were present for and spoke up passionately against the Mello's and in defense of our rural community, yet the decisions that are now being put forth by the late Bertha Favre's estate are being enacted by members of their family who are not full-time residents of Plymouth, and two of those three family members do not even live in New Hampshire. It is deeply concerning that one of the last truly rural vestiges of Plymouth could be transformed so irreparably by individuals who simply won't be here to see or live it. It's also unsettling that a family who has built generational wealth and reputation serving others and working in service of, quote-unquote, "conservation" is now seeking to actively harm one of the last dirt road communities in the town of Plymouth. We respectfully ask the planning board to weigh this decision carefully. Granting this request will have economic, environmental, and cultural costs, including the pricing out of generational residents, the loss of vital wildlife habitat, and an increased burden on an already tenuous rural infrastructure. We ask, what do you stand for and who do you stand up for if it isn't with the long-term permanent residents of this town that you serve? Thank you for giving our family the opportunity to comment. I yield the floor.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lisa Donner. I'm on the Pemme Baker Land Trust Committee and just want to let you know that the previous speaker's statements are not in concordance with our understanding of the Favre intent. We've been in discussion with the Favre family for the last year about putting the field that is across the street from Bertha Favre's house into agricultural conservation easement where there will be no development, with the exception of one small lot that's being set aside. So the majority of that field is intended to be conserved. We were also in discussion with the Favres about extending the conservation lands that are held by the Pemme Baker Land Trust. That's still in development, but this lot line adjustment is part of the process of getting to a point where that conservation easement can be developed separate from the residential lot A, which was already slated to be developable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Can I ask a quick question?
Rebecca, yeah?
Lisa, what, Romney Ecological Systems is the Pemme Baker Land Trust, just to make sure we understand that?
Yeah, there's some confusion of the name. Pemme Baker Land Trust is under the umbrella of Romney Ecological Systems.
My name is Wig Kent. I'm also a resident of Plymouth. I just, to put a little historical perspective on the easement, this, this property that's being discussed tonight, this lot line adjustment, is part of a much larger easement that was donated to the Pemme Baker Land Trust. Many acres of property up on Texas Hill Road have been donated by the Favre family and has protected that, that property from development for many years. So it's an ongoing easement. This is a reconfiguration of part of that property in anticipation of some changes because of Bertha Favre's death, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public in this room or on Zoom? It is 7:14 and I will close the public hearing. It's worth noting for everyone in the room that as members of the planning board, our job here is to enforce the laws as written in our zoning ordinance and follow our regulations and some of these other concerns we've heard are important concerns and to some extent outside the purview of what we can consider as members of the planning board. And it is also a reason, if you are concerned, I mean, it's going forward about certain changes, this is all the more reason to speak up when it comes time to think about zoning amendments and that sort of thing, that, which is where the teeth come, that can actually promote or prevent certain types of changes happening.
That's where the actual planning happens.
Yeah.
Do we want to address the waivers specifically before we consider the?
Okay.
So I'll read. The first waiver request is that subject regulations, Article 6 and 1, a waiver of plat scale from one inch to 100 foot toe, one inch to 150 feet is requested. The two lots compromise a total of 89.68 acres, and the final plat is legible at a scale of one inch equals 150, which is larger than the scale used for the recorded plat. And then the second is that subdivision regulations require topographic contours at five-foot intervals. A waiver is requested to show five-foot topographic contours only CE Residential Site A. Site A is the only developable area on the proposed adjusted tax map, as the remainder is not developable under the conservation easement. Tax map 228-8 is already developed with a house barnwell and septic.
Well, I should, I should also mention, when we accepted the application as complete, we implicitly accepted
We accepted them.
Yeah, I, I think we really need to be dealing with our waivers at the, accepting the application as complete and not at this point.
And we did mention waivers at that point, and nobody seemed to object to them.
Right, right, okay.
Pretty standard for a
Yeah.
subdivision or a boundary line adjustment of this size.
I have a question. Is, is the Old Hebron Road in fact a protected scenic road? And if so, are there any restrictions on development?
I'm not aware of any designation that's been made of Old Hebron Road. Designated scenic roads would have limitations on tree cutting, particularly by utility companies, but I'm not aware of any designation of Old Hebron Road as a scenic road.
That's only within, even if it was, that's only within the right-of-way. It's not outside.
Correct.
And we're not really seeing a development application here. We're seeing boundary line adjustments.
I just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you.
In board discussions?
Yeah.
Let me ask the applicant a question.
Yes, you may.
Is there any specific intent to the lot geometry?
In some respects, the, the lower elevation line of this new, the 12.69 acre lot was designed to be 100, 200 feet away from the large clay brook wetland area. And, and other than that, it was, you know, primarily working with existing lines, boundary lines, and some topography. So one boundary basically follows a, a brook, a drainage, and then the other, the bottom line parallels the wetland area.
Thank you.
Anyone like to offer any findings of fact, perhaps?
The lot exceeds five acres and does not require subdivision approval.
Lots over five acres, it doesn't require septic approval?
The proposed boundary line adjustment, while maintaining two lots, does not create a lot that is non-conforming in dimensional standards. So both, both resulting lots would still be conforming to current zoning.
So meets all dimensional standards?
Yep.
Or requirements?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I will move that we approve the boundary line adjustment as presented.
Second.
With the waivers as requested.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the boundary line adjustment with the waivers requested. Is there any further discussion?
Just like to say that Bertha Favre was, I concur with the Mayhew family and I understand where you're coming from, and it's a beautiful road and it was very special to the Favres. And I remember Bertha saying at the meeting we had at the high school, I think you were there, Neil, she wanted the road to stay the way that it was. She did not want it paved. I know that the Favre family, since their passing, has gone to, have sold much of the land, 300 or so acres, to a local family that will look after the land and take care of it the way that the Favres did. And so they were, they were always thinking down the road, what, what do we need to do to be prepared for when we're gone? And they did, I guess, allow for some building of some of the lots and kept the back lots preserved forever. And I, I'm just not sure what the planning board can do more. And it's nice to see Wedge here, my first, Wedge here. It's my first few days on the planning board, 17 or 18 years ago. Wedge sat there and I sat right here, didn't I? So, it's good to have you back in the room.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the boundary line adjustment is approved. I'll just remind the applicant to provide a Mylar and recording fees for the registry. Oh, okay. Probably send it to Joseph.
We, we may have to send them later though, right?
Sure, yeah.
Typically, we'll do it at, you know, in, in the next couple of days, but we can make sure to reach out and give those to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Say hi to Bob for me. Say hi to Bob for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any informational or pre-application reviews? Are you aware of any, Joseph?
I'm not aware of anybody who's requested one.
Okay. All right. Other business from members of the board and planning staff. We have a review and comment on a Class 6 road building permit application, which ties us into RSA 67441, which has to do with building on Class 6 roads. So, the planning board is asked to review and comment on proposed building development on parcel 248001 on the Class 6 portion of Hunt Road. And we have a packet with some further information about that as well. So, for this, we are not, it is not up to us to approve it. That is a select board issue. It is up to us to comment on it for the select board. We can make recommendations and comments, but it's not up to us to actually offer final approval. And that is spelled out in the RSA indicators. Is the applicant present? Would you like to say a few words?
I'm here with my wife Lily and baby Cedar someplace. We're a young family looking to hopefully move to town and build in the next few years. We do have a timeline laid out. We're currently under contract with Mr. Derwood Gray of Bridgewater for his land, as you mentioned, Lot 1 on map 248. And the, the contract is conditional on, on select board approval. What we're asking today is for you guys to comment on our building plan simply for a camp on this property, much like a lot of the other camps up on, or I guess down from here on Hunt Road. If you're not familiar with, obviously, you're probably familiar with Hunt Road, but it, it does just dip in and out of Plymouth from Hebron to Bridgewater. So, the section, it looks like, that's in Plymouth is, is all Class 6. The plan beyond the camp though, and what we would like approval for from the select board, is to continue to develop that lot with the intent to put a residential structure on it in the years to come. So, we would like a variance to live on the road. We do understand that would mean that we have to sign a waiver of municipal limits. So, we're aware of that.
About you taking responsibility for what might happen.
Absolutely, yep.
And I see a note here from the police department and water and sewer about potential access if there's an emergency and such. Do you understand?
We're aware of that issue, yep, absolutely. So, just to walk you through the timeline real quick, for the rest of the year, if we are approved and are able to buy the property, we would work on developing the road a little bit. We would be in, we've already been in contact with Joe of the highway department. So, we would work with him to develop Hunt Road enough to just have access in, in and out of it for the camp a little bit more easily. That would just involve some culverts maintaining the road, maybe crowning it and adding some gravel. So, that would, that would probably cover most of the rest of the year. 2024, we would be planning on finishing any, any road work and then bringing in a builder, a septic designer, and working with them to, to start to plan the site a little bit. So, you might start to see some more applications coming through then. From there, it kind of goes, I have a timeline laid out to 2028 is kind of the projected date, obviously not written in stone yet. And that's what I've got.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Yes, Mike?
So, is this where Derwood has his small animal shelter barn?
I believe there's no structures on this property yet. He, he divided his lot from the Bridgewater side, so he, he kept his lot, the, the portion that stays in Bridgewater, and then this is the 22 acres that is in the town of Plymouth.
How far up where the access is on Hunt Road is his house?
His house? I believe his house is off of Clement Road, which parallels Hunt Road in, in Bridgewater.
I've been there.
I've been there too. Grandmother was there still.
Will you access from the Dick Brown side or from the Hebron side?
We would be planning on accessing from the Hebron side just because of two bridges that would have to be updated on the Dick Brown side.
I have another question. Where, does anybody know where the other development is that's, has a main house and structures around it? Is that off of Hunt?
That is off of Hunt Road and it is close to the Hebron end on the other side of the road. Let me try and find it here.
Next question for Neil. Did we resolve the bridge issue?
Not yet.
It's still being resolved. Never figured that out with Bridgewater?
Well, we've been working with the town of Bridgewater and we're still working with the town of Bridgewater.
So, what's the, how does the bridge play into all of this?
Well, it's on the town line.
On Hunt Road between Bridgewater and Plymouth?
That, yeah, I think that's, if they're accessing from the Hebron side, that's, yes.
I was on the planning board when we approved that development with the small cabins.
I think I was offered at that. I was, yeah.
And they're using, they're coming off 3A.
Okay.
Well, do we have any thoughts for the select board on this?
The only guidance I can think that we could provide is that, you know, further subdivision may be prohibited based on whatever standards may exist for premature development based on the condition of the road.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, issuance of a single building permit on an existing lot seems to be, I think most towns deal with that. My familiarity is that some towns adopt a policy, but, you know, just, if Plymouth doesn't have one, it's kind of up to them to decide.
I think it's in the RSA's, that's right, Joseph, is that right? That the planning board is supposed to advise the select board?
Correct.
Yeah.
My.
Oh, yeah, that's right, right at number one here.
Many towns that I'm familiar with will often allow the next lot past an existing developed lot to be, to file for a building permit, but they won't if it's like three lots in. So, you know, if there's already maintenance of a Class 6 road up to a, as an existing driveway by the owner of that, and the new development is only, you know, a couple hundred feet to get to there, I mean, it still becomes an issue of shared maintenance of a Class 6 road because in effect, you're, you know, the shared maintenance of the private way on the Class 6 road, which is still a public road is, you know, it, it gets complicated, you know?
So, so my understanding that we don't really see any reason to block this.
No, I don't.
As long as the applicant understands all the liabilities and responsibilities of this sort of development.
Yeah, I don't even think it's our job to make sure that the applicant does that. I think that's the select board. I don't think it's our job to block it. I think we could, we can make some.
Or advise against it, yeah.
Yeah, so it's really just after review and comment by the planning board, is what it says from the statute, so.
I chose my words poorly there.
Yeah.
I meant advise against it, yeah.
I think the other issue that sometimes gets confusing with Class 6 roads is that they are existing rights of way, and even though they're not maintained, they are still open for public use.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, if you choose to develop this as a private driveway for yourself, you may encounter people who choose to explore that. And, and my understanding is that they, unless the town poses it subjects to gates and bars, that public access still has to be maintained.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can't, you can't put up a fence and say, "Private road, no trespassing", like it's still a public road. Yeah, thank you.
I guess we, we see no reason to advise against this for the select board.
I just, I think they've got to resolve the bridge issue between Bridgewater.
If, if he can make access from the Hebron side, I mean, it's, it simply becomes a long way in and, you know, the, the only risk is that, you know, the, you know, there might not be much fire protection, there may not, 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 might not be much emergency response from ambulances, you know, the police probably can't provide much service there. It's, there's, there's not a whole lot of service that Plymouth can provide, okay, on a Class 6 road, you know, if they're not, they're not willing to get there.
Yeah.
Or if they're not able to get there.
They're, they're not asking to develop a residential dwelling.
Not immediately. It, it is in your long-term goals, right? If I understand correctly?
Yeah, to be clear, that is the plan, long-term. The building permit that you see there is simply for a camp, but we're hoping to use this building permit to get to the select board level and get approval to start developing a residential lot or a residential structure on this lot.
So, is this going to come before us every time there's a new building permit for another, another structure? I mean, that's fine. But, yeah, I, I think really we have, it doesn't sound like we have any comment.
Yeah.
Really.
No objection at least.
Yeah.
I wish you luck.
Good luck.
Welcome to Plymouth.
Say, as far as other business from members of the board and planning staff, I will remind us all and give us a few updates, that our next meeting is going to be on a Wednesday, June 7th, and it's not going to be here. It is going to be our second community meeting with the housing project. And so, that's going to be at the high school, which we just secured yesterday, I guess that was, right?
Correct.
And so, the other buildings that we were looking at, both the senior center and the elementary school, were not available. So, we got a spot in the high school. And that's on June 7th at 6:30. A few words about the format. There's, like the previous community meeting, there will be a presentation from Barrett Planning Group updating us and the community on the status of the housing project, what kind of data we've collected, and feedback from the community and developers and everyone else that has been spoken with, spoken to. And from there, as opposed to the breakout sessions we did our last community meeting, we are going to have a series of, where I'm looking for, not kiosks, but stations.
Correct.
Where we will engage the public in various activities having to do with housing types and, among other things. And so, that will be a planning board meeting. It will be a Wednesday, 6:30, at the elementary school, June 7, high school on June 7th. And we don't have too much more information, details about any prep that might be necessary at this point. We might be able to send more information out before that actually takes place. Do other members of the housing committee have anything to add to that? Or Joseph, for that matter?
Nothing on my end. I think you covered it well.
Yeah, okay.
Has everyone taken the survey?
Ah, it closes tonight, right?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 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 yeah, sorry.
I'll get on it.
So, we, does that mean we don't have a meeting on the first?
That means if you don't have a meeting on the first.
Okay, and we're on for the 15th for a regular.
Yes. So, we have two weeks back-to-back. It's kind of a weird month, we'll have to revisit some of that. If I remember correctly, we have the meeting on the 7th, then the Thursday after that for our third Thursday meeting. And then we have a meeting scheduled at this point, the last week of the month, that's supposed to replace our first week of July meeting.
Correct.
So, this way, we have no meeting the first week of July when people might be traveling and doing other things.
Yep. Correct. That's all, as per the new, the new schedule, which is posted around and has, it's the one we distributed to the board when we first set up the HOP schedule, but it's also on the town's website, so if anybody wants to, you know, check in about any of those states as well, it's on the planning board page.
As long as you keep us updated with agendas.
Wait for Joseph's emails.
Yes.
Anything else from the board or staff?
I have two things. The first is, I just want to say in our, reiterate something I said earlier, that in our bylaws, it does specify that we're asking our applicants, when they present their application before we accept it as complete, to discuss, to go over waivers at that point.
Okay.
I think that makes a lot more sense.
Thank you.
And that way, we're not building conditions on waivers that maybe we should have thought about at the, accepting the application stage.
I think we did in this case actually discuss the waiver.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Sorry, I, I might have missed that. I apologize.
I know, I think, I think when we were dealing with a previous subdivision application, it got a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
We maybe should have hung it, in my opinion, should have hung it up, or we got, we should have thought, talked about the waivers more at the acceptance phase.
Agreed.
So, I just wanted to reiterate that. The other bit is the accessory dwelling unit and the need for a CUP for that, and just want to think about the fact that, you know, ADU is different, is, can be different than a multifamily house, but sometimes it's the same as a multifamily house and it's really how your, you know, an attached accessory dwelling unit, is that any different than a multifamily unit which is permitted in many zones? So, I just want to think about how, we, we had originally done a CUP for the ADU, I think, to track it, and, I mean, we've seen more ADU applications in the past, this year than that we've seen at all prior to this.
Are you suggesting we might want to do it by right instead, or?
I'm just, I, I want to bring that up. It just seems, it seems silly that you could have a duplex on a property, or you could have a duplex with a thousand square foot less or less attachment to it.
And that requires a CUP.
And that, yeah, requires a CUP. That, to me, those, those don't really line up very well, so.
The only thing I'd like to suggest, Mr. Chair, is that it seems like that we have several students in the audience.
Yes.
And if you, it might be good to open the floor to questions in case anybody would like to have any questions. Oh, you got it.
It's next on the agenda here.
Thank you.
Were you just brushing past the CUP and the ADU thing or what?
No, no.
I mean, we don't need to talk about it now. I just, I think it's...
I think it's a good question to raise. And, I mean, it makes sense perhaps potentially to do it by right instead of with a CUP.
Or attached by right.
Yeah.
Detached.
I did, I thought we were done. I'm sorry. Bless over that. I like that.
But it, it deserves a revisit, perhaps. And maybe not tonight, but thank you for like spurring that idea on and putting it on potential further agendas going forward. And we are in fact doing a housing study and talking about housing regulations and all that, so.
It certainly seems like duplexes are less restrictive than ADUs.
Duplexes are less, I mean, yeah. I think in some cases you could be like, "Am I choosing a duplex or am I choosing an ADU?" And it really, I don't know. One is a little easier to do.
Yeah.
And, and if we do choose to stick with the CUP, I think some clarification about what, what kind of, what kind of process that is. What kind of process that is. Because I think there is some confusion there. So.
Okay, thank you.
Those are my, those are my two.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So up next on our agenda is public comments. Are there comments or questions from members of the public? Your chance to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone and... State your name and comment.
I'm, I'm always intrigued when there are students in the audience. I always wonder if there are questions about the processes that we go through and if anything's not clear, so.
There are no dumb questions.
No.
I mean, there are, and I ask plenty of them, so.
Hello. I am Louis Castrella from Plymouth Regional High School. I just want to ask, in a lot of these cases where there's a lot of gray area and some of the guidelines, what is really the deciding factor for you guys as a committee to be able to come up with a ruling?
That's a good and difficult question.
It's a great question.
Would anyone like to answer that question?
I can say that, I'm happy to jump in and say that we have several, a couple of things that guide our decision-making process. The first and most rigorous is the zoning ordinance, which is approved by, and any changes to the zoning ordinance have to happen at town meeting and get approved by all, all the voters. The planning board is empowered beyond that to create criteria for subdivisions and site plans. Those, so if, if we create the rules for subdivisions and site plans, if somebody asks for a variance or an exception to one of the rules we lay out, that's within our decision-making ability to kind of consider those requests, although we can, we don't have to. But if somebody asks to do something that's not allowed in the zoning ordinance, we can't make those decisions. So that's where the zoning board of appeals comes in. So there are certain things that fall under the criteria of special exceptions, which are more closely defined. And then more open-ended variant, more open-ended things are variances, basically. So there's another board, which is the zoning board of exceptions, which if you were to come to us and say, "Hey, I want to put..." I don't know, I'm trying to think.
Adjustment.
I want to put an eight-family home on a piece of property.
Yeah, I want to put an eight-family home in the single-family residential. You know, we would not be able to, well, I mean, I guess that would be a site plan issue, right? But it would be...
But they need, they need a variance from the zoning ordinance. And then the ZVA, the zoning board of adjustment would come in, which you're a member of.
I think there's, the idea is to get as little gray, get as much gray area out of our regulations as possible, so we're not scratching our heads and trying to figure out what the spirit behind a regulatory document actually is.
And if we see the same gray area coming up over and over again, that indicates to us, we probably need to clarify something. And at the very least, until we clarify something, if we can be consistent with how we deal with that issue, that helps and all the applicants, like, just know what to expect. Because it's always good to know what to expect when you're coming in.
I find with the gray areas, for me, if there is one, I go to the state regulation information, and I see what that, if it, if there's anything that applies to it, and I try to make a decision based off that.
And would you say the state regulation and then the local community for Plymouth regulation, do they differ? Like, is the contrast between the two very significant or is it very, like, little? And you try to follow through with what the state?
And they really can't. They can't, they can't...
Our local ones can't contradict the state ones.
I'm not saying contradict, but at least differ in some ways.
They can differ in some ways with, for instance, there's one town locally that for a radius for a septic system to a well, the state is 75 feet, and this particular town is 125 feet. So they can, I think they can go off of those. So that's why I typically will go to the state stuff if there is a gray area, just to try to get some clarification in my own head to make the right decision.
You can be more restrictive, but not necessarily less restrictive.
Right, to a certain extent, but then there's certain, certain...
In general.
Yeah, statutes. Like the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit one is required by state statute. We have to have that and we can't, we can't limit, there's certain things we can't limit within that, within the ADU. There's requirements that we have to adhere to. So.
Does that help?
That just mean a whole lot more gray area?
The only other thing I'd ask is, as a committee, how long have y'all collectively been together?
Collectively.
Collectively.
Well, I mean, members come in and out.
Yeah, I understand that.
As they got appointed and maybe want to resign. I mean, the planning board itself has been here since there's been zoning.
Seventies?
1956.
Fifty-six?
Yeah, you can, you can have a planning board with that.
There's been a planning board since 1956.
I've only been here for about a year.
Been nine for me.
I'm in my fourth year here, but I have about maybe eight, eight, eight years of experience in another town on a planning board as well.
I got like three and a half.
I think it was either '76 or '77 when I first started serving on the board. It's a long time.
Those two gentlemen right there have been on all the boards multiple times for years.
That'll be all for me.
Thank you very much.
You should get extra credit for that. I'll talk to your teacher.
Bonus.
Are there further comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. They need to have their papers signed.
We can do that afterwards.
We can do that afterwards.
It does not have to be a matter of the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
If anybody has paperwork they'd like us to sign, feel free to bring it up.